Hello, everybody. This is taking a little time to get used to, but this is actually our official school committee meeting. And we actually are here. This is an emergency meeting because some new information has just come out yesterday from the state that we want to be able to address with you immediately. I know people have lots of questions. We had other things originally on the agenda for today, and those will be taken care of next week. If at all, we'll take another look at the agenda and will address matters as they need to be addressed. But for today, the only items on the agenda are an update on COVID-19 and the impact on schools, the governor's declaration, and of course, an opportunity for a public comment for anybody who's here in the meeting with us. So I'll start, and this is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. And I will start by letting you all know that if you're muted and you have just joined and you want to make a comment or participate at any point, just click the raise hand and I'll unmute you, or just wave at me and I'll see you if you are visible through video. Okay, so, yeah.
Do we want to just make sure we do a roll call of attendance, you know, just in sync with what we were doing before?
Yeah, absolutely. I was just waiting for Aaron to get on, but I do.
She is.
Yeah, I'm on, Lori. And so I believe that Michael or Steve said that nobody's supposed to be in these meetings without a name on their picture. And I see one said that says iPhone. So I don't know. We're supposed, because it's a public meeting, it's supposed to be able to be visible to the attendance. Sorry.
Do dogs need to identify themselves also?
Yeah, that would be good.
So there's somebody in the meeting.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
Paul's trying to talk.
So that would only apply, I think, to the committee members. Just the same way you can sit in our audience in any meeting and never identify yourself at all, right? So if they do public comment, just like if they came up to the podium, that would make sense. And we need to be able to identify ourselves. So, but I don't know that we would ever make anyone that just joins to listen in have to identify themselves.
Well, I think they just did.
Yeah, I don't think it's an issue.
I'm Mr. Fox.
But, uh, but it's good to know. We'll get, we'll get that squared away. We're all sort of learning this format. Some of us are a little more advanced with it than others. And we're also just figuring out the rules of, you know, who can comment and when and from what forum. For now, for the school committee purposes, anybody joining this meeting as it was posted on Zoom with us is free to comment during the public comment period or perhaps at different points in the meeting, depending on what we're talking about and at the chair's discretion. But as far as taking comments from outside of this forum, I'm not going to be doing that at this point. As we know, everything is constantly changing and evolving. So we will go with the flow as we have to. So again, some new information came out yesterday and then I believe again this morning as far as instructions for schools. So I'm going to throw it over to Jim and ask you, Jim, to please fill us in on what's happened. I'll do a roll call first.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you here? Aaron Williams?
Yes, here.
Paul Kendall?
Here.
Mark Terry?
Here.
Kathy Bates?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, Jim, thanks.
Okay, no worries. Thank you. Yeah, I've got a few things that I think I want to share with regard to COVID-19 and things that are coming out of the State House and in the Commissioner's Office of Education. And forgive me if I jump around a little bit. I had my admin team on Zoom this morning at 7:00 AM trying to work through some of the information in the Commissioner's at 12 o'clock, his recommendations. So, so it's appropriate that we have a little discussion on that. So as you know, a couple of weeks ago, Governor Baker put schools on public schools enclosure through April 6th. And then yesterday, the 25th, he closed schools through May 3rd. So beginning May 4th would be the next school day, that Monday. And in so doing, he also, the day before, filed some legislation with the state to give the Commissioner of Education some powers to remove the requirements. As you know, Mass General Law requires students in grades three through eight and grades 10 to participate in MCAS. And although the federal government on the 20th said, hey, each state can apply for a waiver for accountability purposes, you still have to go through that process of filing the waiver. Well, until yesterday, the state had not done that. They have officially applied for a waiver. But that's only one hurdle that the state has to go through because we have Mass General Law that requires us to administer exams. So that's the second component. And there was a filing on the 24th, so two days ago. And that, as far as I know, has not been passed yet or has not been taken under for any votes. But the Commissioner did refer to it yesterday in his press conference with the governor, when the governor announced the schools would be closed through the, through the 3rd. So I think it's important to note that although MCAS is still technically on the books, I would not anticipate it happening for grades three through eight at this time. Grade 10 is still a question mark. And that's only because it does have an impact on graduation determination and requirements across the Commonwealth. So, so that being said, they're in conversations about what to do with MCAS and what to do with students who are still in need of passing MCAS for graduation and/or meeting graduation requirements in local districts. So there's a lot of conversations that we're having as an admin team and how to approach this. And the one thing I can say is the Commissioner now has some authority, if this bill should pass, to waive specific requirements for graduation and to give local districts the power to have kids graduate without necessarily passing the MCAS and/or meeting certain attendance requirements, et cetera. So, so that's important to understand that that's still in the works. That has not been decided yet. And then.
Jim, is it true, though, that they're already out of school on the dates that they would have actually taken the test?
Sure. Yeah, exactly. In March, well, yeah.
If they did decide that we needed it for some reason.
They could push it back. Yeah. So, right. So that gives, again, there are a couple of things with this. It gives, it just gives the Commissioner, as I was reading the law, they're looking at three pieces. One, it allows them to push back the Student Opportunity Act filing. Again, it's due April 1. So it would give them, the Commissioner, the opportunity to push that back because again, that's written into Mass General Law. Two, authorizes on the recommendation of the Commissioner to modify or waive all requirements for high school graduation determination. Right? So that's the MCAS piece. And then third, it allows the Commissioner, again, to waive all assessments, which is the grades three through eight in addition to the 10. So, so there's three components to this. And again, it hasn't been passed yet. It just, I just, you need to be aware that they are trying to certainly reduce some of the regulations needed for us to graduate our students and to take a year off from the MCAS. So if we go back in May and they had not actually said we're not taking the MCAS, we'd have to make those MCAS exams up during that May-June time period. Right? So that's 10 to 15 days that we could be gaining back for educational purposes. So that's, that's what we're hoping. Questions on that from the board?
Anybody?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm assuming it just wouldn't be a good idea from a lot of perspectives. I mean, other people might be having a similar question. It would be a bad idea. If the grade 10 MCAS, would we preclude them from just taking it in there the next year, right? So it is, I'm assuming it's just, hey, it's a year later, it's not the same curriculum and it wouldn't be a fair test to take MCAS to, you know.
Is anyone else having trouble hearing, Paul?
I was, yep.
Yeah, Paul, there's an issue with your sound.
Let's see if.
That's better.
Does that any matter?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
I got the gist of the question. I think that just, if you want to repeat it for the record, but I think the gist was what would preclude sophomores from taking it their junior year in order to meet the competency determination. I would say that's exactly what would be the steps they would, they would take. So we would offer sophomores and juniors next year, the MCAS, at exactly the same time. Or if not, you know, they might modify the dates of when it's being taken. But that's exactly what would be the steps they would take.
And would they need to modify content in any way? I don't know if it's, if it's, I honestly have not taken it myself. I don't know if it's generic enough content that any sophomore, junior, or senior should be able to.
Yes, I mean, it's through, it's through, you got to remember the MCAS, and it's still a thorn in people's side, is that you're really only testing through ninth grade and a half of a year almost of education, maybe three quarters before they take the exam as a sophomore. So all of those juniors would have all of the curriculum that they would need in order to take that exam. Yeah, so, so there's no, there's no downside. We have, I mean, we have juniors who might come into the, into the state, move from out of state, come in, have to take the exam in order to get their diploma. That's just the state law. So, so I don't see it being a tremendous issue. Do I wish they would just get rid of the whole thing completely? Sure. Wish we wouldn't have to worry about it. But that's, it's my own personal bias. I think it takes up way, way too many days of, of good teaching.
For sure. But, so at least for right now, I mean, it's certainly not happening as it was anticipated. And it seems like every day or few days or a week, we're dealing with new information anyway. So all we know right now is that it's not happening as scheduled. And probably not likely this year, but a few dots need to be connected before that's official.
Right. So, so let me, yeah, so let me just, before, because I asked my admin team to be here because I want them to fill you in on, you know, you know, a few things, Lisa's here and Kathy and, you know, dealing specifically with some things that, challenges that we're having, especially with COVID-19 and how it relates whether to the movement with special education, but also nutrition services and things of that nature. But let me just talk about first, this afternoon, the Commissioner did send out remote learning recommendations and I, it's posted online on the Department of Ed's website. I will email it out to, to folks. And again, it's guidance and recommendations that were written and drafted by the Commissioner, the MAS leadership, so the school superintendent's leadership. The MAS C had a voice in this. The Massachusetts Teachers Association at the state level signed off on this, as did the American Federation of Teachers, the AFT. So it was a collaborative effort of designing a process for the next five-plus weeks with regard to what is recommended, what are the recommended models that the school districts should be employing, while still considering, you know, if you've listened to the Commissioner from day one, he's most concerned about our disadvantaged students and our vulnerable students. And however we move forward with any type of learning or curriculum, say at the high school level, which can be very different than at the elementary level, that we've got to be careful that, that the opportunity and the access exists for those most vulnerable students. So if you're going to move to, say, a pass fail or a credit, no credit grading system for the remainder of, of the closure, we've got to make sure, and he writes it very clearly in his, his recommendations, is that before moving forward with any determination, we strongly urge districts and schools to consider whether students have had equitable access to learning opportunities during the closure, keeping in mind the variety of technology, health, disability, and language challenges that could occur. So being very clear, right? I mean, yes, you can go ahead and move forward a little bit more with some academics and more focused on the high school versus an elementary. But that being said, if you're going to go down that road, are you given good consideration to making sure it's equitable? And that is, you know, for our special education students, our, our low-income students, our ELL students, our students who are dealing with trauma, so those vulnerable subgroups. I think, you know, I've, I've reached out to Michelle Smith, our union president, asking for her and I to get together to have some conversation now that some recommendations and guidance has been put out to us. Highlights of the guidance is that they're looking to have districts engage in meaningful, productive learning for about a half of a school day. They recognize the fact, or the Commissioner and all the groups he's been working with recognize the fact that this is new for our educators as well. It recognizes the fact that our educators are being put in situations where their home and their children are home and that we're all battling some of the similar struggles of being parents, helping our own children with their on, you know, their remote learning, helping, you know, ease that burden and trying to still put in that full workday in order to, you know, to meet the, the needs of our employers. So they're, they're certainly recommending continuing to reinforce the curriculum that has been previously taught. They recognize that individual experiences are going to vary. Where our admin team this morning, we had the conversation about, you know, 50% of our students are logging on and doing the work. And, you know, we don't have the exact data, but that's just the anecdotal data that I've received. And what happens is when, when you don't have students that have to be held accountable, and that could mean grades, it could be a variety of other things, it's way more difficult, right? It's way more difficult to, to engage them in any form of, of learning. Teachers can be putting work out there. And students who don't do it don't feel as though they need to do it. And it's not necessarily because they can't access it. I mean, there may be some of those students, and I don't doubt that there are some of those students. But the point is not all students are accessing it or choosing to access it. And so they recognize that as well in the recommendation. And where the guidance before was not necessary to look for teachers or educators to provide feedback, they're actually saying, hey, it's okay to provide feedback now with the work that you're assigning. And that's important. I think, again, we've been looking as superintendents for clearer direction. And I think we have some. Is it as robust and rigorous as probably some folks would want? Probably not. Will we do the best we can considering the resources that we have? Absolutely. And I think we are already. I really do. So that's, that's the, the crux of what he said. And he is hopeful that by early April, this plan will be up and running for every district across the Commonwealth. Some are already further along. We're not in bad shape, to be honest. It's sort of, I've been starting to, since the memo came out, pulling together a document that will be very clear. And I want to, you know, publicly, since we're online, thank Julie Hackett, Dr. Julie Hackett from Lexington, who, who has a nice outline of what she presented. They, they didn't even present any enrichment opportunities for two weeks. They haven't even started, to be honest, yet. They stepped back and said, let's find a, a plan that works for Lexington. And, you know, they've got 7,000 students and trying to make sure that works. And, and I talked to Julie about it and said, can I at least follow your format? Because I think the format itself is what is nice and simple to read. Obviously, it works. We have to put in our information and how it's going to work in Ashland. But so, thank Julie for that.
Lori, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure, Mark.
I just shut myself off here, Max. Jim, you're just touching on something I'm kind of curious about, and that is to what extent are districts coordinated, are we talking with districts that you typically have the superintendents with or Paul, your colleagues, to try to see sort of what's working well? I know it's obviously very early into this, but, you know, I assume our teachers are collaborating with their colleagues to some degree to come up with materials. And I'm just wondering what we're, what we're doing in terms of communicating with other resources outside of the district, if at all, to try to present the best, best that we can for our kids right now.
Sure. From my lens, and I'll let Paul after, I spend three to four hours a day talking to 20-plus superintendents. And that's been every day since last, well, Thursday, week, two weeks ago today. Trying to figure out what can we all do? Holliston, Midway, Hopkinton, those local districts near us, Medfield, it's constant. And what we think today occurred, we're doing a lot of this stuff already that, that he is recommending. I think where we fell, and that's my fault, was I think we needed to be a little more explicit with, with our families, that this is what we're capable of and this is what we're doing. I think the framing of a window, the three-hour window, if you will, of actual every day was big for us as a, as a, that's all superintendents have been asking for, is that guidance from the state level saying, okay, tell us that this is the expectation and then we will move forward with that. I think.
Jim, I mean, I think the way I, I understood it when I read it, tell me if I'm wrong, though, is that three hours doesn't mean like a teacher in front of you for three hours.
That's correct.
Three hours worth of work.
Correct. Right. So I sort of think of it this way, and I always ask for forgiveness from the non-high school people because I was a high school teacher, right? And I figure, you know, if we're, if we've got five periods a day at the high school, and let's assume there's 60 minutes, right? So half of that is 30 minutes now. So you're looking at engaging students in each of those five classes for 30 minutes a day, depending upon if you're rotating your schedule, it's, you're adding different classes. So like, our students take seven classes up to. So, so providing enough work in every one of those days that results in 20 to 30 minutes per class. That wasn't, there was no guidance with that before.
Right.
And so we're sort of appreciating the fact that there's a frame of reference. So it may look different at the elementary where it's, ELA and math are heavier focused, the work. But it's not saying teachers need to be in front of kids every one of those minutes. What it's saying is that work needs to be provided. It's also saying, the recommendation was that teachers do need to be communicating at minimum two times a week in engaging with kids. And it doesn't have to be during that time period. So families have the flexibility to, to look at their schedule. So I've asked the principals to create a mock schedule, if you will, of what it might look like for a kid and how you can do it at home. Because we also have to be cognizant that families and their family dynamic, because we say nine o'clock is going to occur for morning meeting at, at the Minda School for kids. Well, a family that's working from home, making sure that that kid is ready for nine o'clock, might be really difficult. And so we've got to be thoughtful of that. So providing maybe a recorded message for the family meeting so they could actually go ahead and review it with their kid or have their child review it. Those are all the pieces that are complex and that we're trying to work through. But to your, to your question mark, yeah, it's every single day, three to five hours. We're all trying to figure out how to build this plane. And there are some districts that are just so far, I look at the technical schools, to be honest. My son at Minuteman, online, robust. And because that's the nature of what they do for the most part. I mean, so it's kind of interesting. But my other son, who's at Nishoba, at the middle school, doesn't have that same type of learning. So there's a lot of disparity, but we're trying to level it by the recommendations. Paul, you know, if you want.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, my question was also, Jim, not just about how much coordination you're doing. I know from talking to you that you're on the phone with other superintendents. But I was also wondering, you know, to what degree are we able to push any of that out to teachers, just in terms of finding materials that are appropriate? Do we have other districts that have left to, you know, group by group or team by team of middle school?
I, I think maybe Paul's better to answer how the coordination of any curriculum may be shared between districts because he's been doing a lot of work with assistant superintendents, trying to, to navigate the resources that are available. How do we get those to teachers? And things of that nature.
So Mark, in terms of resources, there's about 15 of us on a group thread and been meeting about three, four times a week on Zoom. People at the start of this were really all over the map when it came to how they were approaching it. Some people were just emailing out 20 different websites and saying, here are some websites for elementary, middle, and high school. Go on them, look at them, and spend time engaging. Other school districts broke it down by grade level. Some people did Google Docs. People were all over the map. What was really good is people shared out a lot of the resources, so we were able to pull and call them together. You know, I know the principals did a great job with their website. I created a website that had a variety of resources on it, so it's, it's all there. I think, I think going forward, we were all looking for was some level of direction from the Commissioner. Was this going to be virtual? Was this going to be online? Was this going to be distant learning? Are we going to approach this with special education? What are the requirements in using Zoom or Google Classroom? How are we going to address the digital divide? We've got some clarity with that today from the Commissioner. And I know we're talking to a lot of my colleagues when this first started. It was like a mad dash for 72 hours to try to figure out what they were going to do and then 48 to implement. And now that we have this, um, this new mandate from the Commissioner, I think we're going to be spending the next 72 hours trying to figure out the best way to push this out and, and then rolling out the families middle to end of next week. But people are all over the map. I think it was really helpful when he said, it really drives the work that we do, when he told us that what we're looking for really for K to eight is just to further enhance the work that's been done and have kids develop a deeper understanding of the work that's been done and not so much push the curriculum forward. Where the high school, he gave us a little bit more leeway to push that curriculum forward. So that at least is going to give us some direction as to how we do work. Looks like most people are going to try to do something on a Google Classroom platform or Google Docs and then share that information out with families.
I, I think another thing that, that, you know, Kelly, thank you for sending me that note. Certainly, the one-to-one, the one-to-one schools are further along than we are, right? I mean, they've, many of their teachers would have been engaged in professional development over the years to utilize Google Classroom, to utilize online platforms that, that we just, we're not there, right? We're, we're not a one-to-one device school district. And those school districts absolutely are, are ahead of us. Further questions before I have Lisa and Kathy give some updates?
Paul, can I tell that you have a question?
Yeah. So a concern.
Yeah, so a a concern or and and then a question as well. So I I mean, I hear that and and. Is the focus more on the the higher levels? Because if I'm if I'm just looking at it from my perspective, right? Three hours. Impossible. I work from home to begin with, so my day hasn't changed one bit. And for to think that I can take my Mendez. School student and act, have him actively engage for three hours a day. I don't see where I fit that in in my day without telling my work, sorry, I have to work half days now. So that there's a, there's concern about that and the quasi question about the focus of that, but also. You know, if we're shifting a little bit to a a little bit past enrichment. Potentially, you know, engaging more and and trying to drive forward a little bit. I I guess I'm concerned a little bit about. You know, en- enlarging the gaps we have, right? And especially, I think, and and maybe I'm wrong here, so I'll let the educators tell me whether I'm wrong, but. Losing that valuable time at early, the the earlier learners, right? I see that being really, really negatively impactful, whereas maybe a high school student could. Could more rapidly catch up where, but you know, especially those elementary kids and the gaps growing there and that lot that that loss of time. On learning for them and how we, you know, and and just the 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 widening of those gaps that we've been trying to close.
Paul, you know, I think this is a good time again to address just the complexity of this entire situation. You know, here you are validly saying, you know, how am I gonna get this done for three hours? And, you know, we've had a parent letter that says, you know, how dare you not be educating my child from eight in the morning until two o'clock in the afternoon? You know, the expectations are all over the place, as are the capabilities of. Families to address it as well as probably teachers too. I imagine that they, every single person. Dealing with this has their own personal story about what they can or can't do. And, you know, the. You know, and I hate just to be the one that keeps bringing this up, but the 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 illness part of this hasn't even completely. Smacked us in the face yet and it's and it's going to. So. You know, trying to find the the sweet spot, you know, is three hours too much? Is it not enough? Is six hours the expectation since that's what we were doing before is, you know, why are fifty percent of people not even logging in? Like, there are so many. Parts of this that make it really difficult to offer like one consistent thing that everybody's going to be happy about. Right, Jim?
Well, I don't, yeah, I I would never pretend that we're going to make everyone happy.
Right. That is the right solution. You know, I I think it's great that there's guidelines for the three hours. But I think, Paul, they also, they're giving districts a lot of flexibility, saying, you know, a lot of these things we're saying are not mandates, you know, they're still. We understand that districts have their own issues and you can decide for yourself if it's going to work. And. You know, I I think. We can state ourselves whether the three hours is something like we're giving you three hours worth of stuff to do, but if you can't get to it because of your own personal situation. You're not going to be penalized in this in this district, and that's where we decide whether we're doing credit, no credit or pass fail or or not even any of that.
Yeah, I think to your point, Laurie, absolutely. I mean, the commissioner is is basically saying, we recognize that not every district. Is the same. We're given a framework and here's our our expectation is that you can provide, you don't have to have. Three hours of the curriculum that is being designed. By, you know. In in conjunction with the frameworks. You can say, okay, you know what, let's do some outdoor learning experiences as a kid, go out and. You know, look at the trees, go take, take a walk if it's the P E Ps, do all sorts of things. It's not, it's not necessarily driven by the frameworks. I want to be clear about that. He's he's not saying everything has to be framework relatable. Here's a chance for some experiential learning. He's, again, he quoted yesterday, he was very adamant about, and so was the governor. Here's an opportunity to maybe create some project-based learning for kids that that takes some of the skills that they have learned. Already this year and that will actually move them forward in some critical thinking on how to do things. That that they would pick up in maybe a lesson. You know, six months down the road. So I I I think there's plenty of opportunity. I I think. Certainly, families that have reached out to me are are looking for. The school system to provide structure for their own home. That's what I take on it or my takeaway. Is that, okay, give me, give me an example of what a structure might look like. And then we'll see if we can figure that out. And that's what educators are trying to figure out is maybe they can, maybe they can't. But at least the the half an hour, the half a day structure. Is starting point for us.
Right, it gives you some guidance.
It it does. Um, I I'm looking at our vision statement and like the things that are standing out to me are social, emotional growth and supportive collaborative innovative. And I think about this just in my own experiences of the last two weeks and like we cannot let this be a trump traumatic time for our children, like it already is. And this is where. What is going to give, and I think to Paul's point. I would say the majority of our parents are dual income. When when it is a nuclear family, it's dual income earners. And the majority, there is not a majority of stay-at-home parents, and so we need to take a sort of menu approach. To those three hours, like my work is being flexible. I get one hour in the morning and one hour in the afternoon to do my homeschooling. And that's it. And then, but I have to work later at night to make it up. Not all parents are going to have that, but I also think most companies are, if you're working from home and you're not direct customer facing. That you're going to be able to have a little bit more flexibility, but what's wrong with having a younger kid? Take a nap, stay up a little later and be able to do work with mom and dad late into the evening, you know, like we have to be, let it be on the parent's schedule and let it be. We have to like with, I'm like, Mr. Kyra, what you are doing and bringing joy to these kids, just thank you because it's. We could really traumatize these kids. None of, parents are not prepared to educate. We're horrible at it. That's. So I think taking like a really. I think the three hours is great and having like. Almost like the popsicle stick approach, like I have popsicle sticks and the kids can pick one. And that you get to pick like what Jim, you're talking about, but to. To push anything more than that, I think is just going to either traumatize kids or parents or both.
No, and again, I'm not saying. I want to be clear, it's a framework for us and and I recognize the fact that that parents. Are trying to. To multitask and to get. You know, some process for homeschooling done, if you will, or remote learning. I I get it and I I think. The approach we have taken is to give options, but I think there's also a frustration factor from an educator who does spend time. Preparing and there's no, and students aren't actually. And families aren't following through. With with doing the the opportunity, the exercises or the enrichment opportunities. It's a challenge. I I'm not, you know, I'm not saying this will be. You know, we're going to wake up tomorrow and implement it and it's going to be. You know, all rainbows out there. It's not. It's going to be muddy. It's going to be ugly. There's going to be families that say we're doing too much. There are going to be families that say we're not doing enough. But I do believe we have focused on the right things, which is. This the well-being of our kids and our families first and foremost. I think we have emphasized that. And by not putting that undue pressure. Currently, but that being said, we are a school system and we we do have to educate. And that's what they pay us to do. And we have to, we have to think about that and, you know, it's, I want to be really thoughtful of. Of the families at home and the kids at home. But I also want to be cognizant of the fact that. That. We're paid to educate kids and my job is to make sure that that at least, at least we provide that opportunity. It's fair and equitable for all kids. Now, whether they take advantage of it. I don't know how to deal with that. So can I pass it over to Lisa? I'd like her just to explain. We made some decisions today about the nutrition and and the the grab and go meals and how how we're going to move forward after. Tomorrow, so.
Hi, Lisa.
Hi.
You're unmuted.
Okay. While we are happily feeding kids, your school lunch heroes are out there doing their job.
Thank you.
I've been giving Jim the numbers every day, which I know he has been giving them to you.
I didn't give them yesterday's.
Oh.
So you you get it eighty-five, eighty-six?
Yes. We served eighty-five students.
Right.
Two breakfasts and two lunches, so three hundred and forty meals.
Right.
Wow.
We've been going up a little bit each time. What Jim and I talked about today is, you know, just like all the other administrators, you're constantly talking to. Your peers in other districts and seeing what's going on. And he had mentioned that he had heard that some were doing, you know, five meals on Monday. I don't like that idea for a number of reasons. And he agreed a hundred percent that if you. Something made on Monday isn't going to be that great on Friday and we really want to give them food they want to eat. Also, I would need to bring so many people into the kitchen that they wouldn't be able to practice social distancing because through all this, I really need to keep my staff healthy. So we've set it up so they can all work in different stations. But. What I asked Jim this morning was, you know, tomorrow's Friday, we've been giving them. Two breakfasts and two lunches every day. Tomorrow's Friday, so. That should be one, or did he want us to do two? And seeing we don't even know if we're going to get reimbursed for these, you know, we're just going to go with the one. So it's like the five school days where we're buying with meals for five days. I said, well, if we're going to do that, then it wouldn't be so bad to start giving them next Wednesday. Three breakfasts and three lunches. Okay, that way the staff doesn't have to be in as much because I really, I mean. One of them goes down and it starts going through. That's going to be bad, so I want to keep them healthy. They all are really happy to be helping and doing what they can. We have also been, when families come, if we have things that we know, like. Obviously, we had all our stuff in that we were going to regularly use, like the Stony Field yogurt we use in our smoothies in the morning. That's not going to travel well and we buy in big containers and the port containers, so. We know they're not going to last through, so we're giving families along with those meals a quart of yogurt.
Aw.
Bang. Or things. It's just going to go to waste. Extra milk, that was coming close to the date. And we'll continue doing that. I mean, we obviously want to have enough food, so because we have been sending some salads home and meals, but when we know we just have too much. We had five schools worth of food we brought to one, so the beginning here, there's going to be some food like that we're going to give away. Kids are probably going to be happy to know that we're also starting to. Be throwing in some of our ala carte items too, because with, you know, not going back till May, some of those are going to go out of date. So we're including that in some of the meals as well. But that's about where we are. I don't think, is there anything else you wanted me to hit on, Jim?
Yeah, because Mark has asked this question often and and I appreciate it in terms of outreach to families, but also. What you clued me into about Framingham and. Summer lunch programs, because I think it's important to understand that so. Probably a lot of our kids are accessing that because that's what they're used to in the summer. So can you just talk about that?
The way summer feeding programs work. Your district has at least fifty percent free reduced students. You supply the meals throughout the year. So that's a a summer feeding program. Framingham is is obviously in that category. Every, the end of every school year, I put flyers at town hall and at the food pantry in the library and everywhere and send out emails saying, you know. You can get meals throughout the summer, go to any of the sites and I put the link where they can click because even if they're going to stay with their. Cousin, I'm making it up, and Lowell, they can find a site where they can go get a free meal. Those districts are being reimbursed now and they're, they're good at this. They've been doing it for years and they're all set up. So in all my communications that I've set up and on our Facebook page, I put that link. So people can go there. I had one family reach out to me and she said. On my daughter, because I'm still working, my daughter's staying with my brother. And it's another town and I sent her the link and said, this is where she can go get meals. Now, Jim had asked me, he said, can you tell me how many of our kids are going there? And I can't because one of the things is. And the beauty of that program is any child under the age of eighteen can get a meal, no questions asked, no ID needed. So they don't even have those records to share with me. I do know that we've got a couple of kids from Keith that are eating with us now and I've been in touch with their director. Because Keith isn't serving because the Barbary School right around the corner.
Framingham.
Yeah. Yeah, so. I've given Jim Jim that link as well, so a lot of our kids are probably just going where they go in the summer. Because, you know, like Jim's been putting it out there. I know Michael Herbert has put it out there. I also sent, because I've been emailing with parents too and. Send, there's a a website that Project Bread has put out that shows them around the state, but if you go to Framingham Public Schools website. They have a link that lists everything that's in Framingham, including Daniel's Table. And other places where families can get meal, because we can only give meals to our students. We can't supply it for everybody. But Daniel's Table is a wonderful organization and they're doing suppers and things like that. Last week when we closed so quickly and I had stuff that was going to go. We brought it over to Daniel's Table.
And I saw that there's that Daniel's Table is doing a huge fundraising drive right now. So they can ramp that up even more.
Yeah.
And it's part of the document that I've, that I'm pulling together, actually. I have Daniel's Table as well as the Framingham Public Schools listed where there are other venues that are students who. Need. Food can go to, so that's all part of that.
And in your talks behind the scenes, is there any indication that, you know, the below fifty percent districts will ever get reimbursed? Not that that's the number one priority, but.
The state has applied for a waiver. A number of waivers have gone through, but not that one yet.
Yeah.
Not that one yet.
But you're saying, Lisa, other states have had that waiver gone, go through and they're getting.
No, 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 no. When I say other waivers, the state has asked for a waiver that we don't have to meet. There's a lot of guidelines that we have to meet that they're exempting. Well, right now they're exempting the other districts from doing them that are over fifty percent, but they're telling us, follow the rules we're setting for them. So if we get the waiver on the below fifty percent, you'll be covered. You'll have all your paperwork, which is why we're requiring the kids to pick up the meal. So we know who they are, even if they're not in our district, we're still feeding them. Or if they're in, say they're going to. Little Folk Farm instead of our preschool, we're still feeding them, but we're keeping those records. Some of the other waivers technically where there's, it's supposed to be congregate feeding. If we give them a meal, they have to eat it on sight. That's another waiver that went through that they don't have to eat it on sight.
Yeah.
But the waiver about endorsing those of us that are not above fifty percent has not been approved yet.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Mark?
I was just going to say that I think one of the things that may be contained in the. Civilist bill that's going through Congress now is authorization for that waiver and funding to support it.
Yes, and I also saw today that they. Made some kind of provision for people that are on SNAP. To get if they're, if they live in a town that is not supplying lunches, that those families will get. The value of a school lunch. For five days a week added to their EBT card. The the challenge with that, I mean, is not everyone that's on free and reduced lunch is necessarily on food stamps.
Right. Right. Okay, thank you. Anything for Lisa anymore?
Maybe just a question regarding how the situation impacts families that might have been, for lack of a better term, on the bubble of being eligible for this or participating before. Right, so, and maybe it's not a fair assumption, but I'm assuming that the families that were either on free and reduced lunch or were, you know, close to that are some of the ones that are, you know, very negatively impacted by the situation and closures and, you know, don't work in jobs that can support remote work. And so they're financially impacted by that. So, you know, how are we? And I don't even know if there's an answer to this, but how are we making sure that those ones that maybe weren't taking advantage of it before understand and get access for stuff that they need? And even, you know, and there's something, maybe a thing Jim about before is we've always provided those meals during, for those free and reduced lunch families during the week. But if those are also the families that are most heavily hit financially by this situation, should we look to extend that to provide some relief over the weekend as well? Maybe on, you know, providing a couple of meals, a couple of days worth of meals on Friday kind of thing? Just to, you know, make sure that those families that were getting by with our five days a week services before, you know, maybe their situation is a little bit more dire now.
Okay, a couple of things on that. One, I'm watching my boss over there who's trying to act like Jim Adams with that name there, but I see her in the corner there, Barbara. We will definitely not get reimbursed for those. And although you all know me, the money's not my big issue. Barbara, I'm covering your face right now. For me, it's feeding the kids. But keep in mind that there are other opportunities for those families to get food from Daniel's Table, from the Ashland Food Pantry, from the program that Michael Herbert has put together. So there are opportunities, and I've been sharing those with those families too, because technically, we're only supposed to be feeding the children. And there are obviously more than just the children in the household. So I'm making sure that they know of those other opportunities to get food for their entire family. And as far as the ones where I thought you were going with this, those on the bubble, surprisingly, a number of the parents I've talked to, they're the ones that work at the grocery stores. They're the ones that, you know, are working as delivery people and things like that. But if they become eligible for free meals, that's something where we, as directors, are also in conversation with the state about. What about these people? Can we backtrack them and make it so they were free as of when this whole thing started? We haven't gotten any guidance on that yet. And certainly, the people that are applying for unemployment right now or who have lost income due to, you know, illness or something, even if they got SNAP now, they are so far behind that it won't come through on, in the virtual gateway to us for a few months. But the state's just trying to figure that all out right now. Because I'm sure there are a lot of families that were on the edge that are now eligible, but we can't process their applications.
And I want to be clear, all of our advertising of the grab and grow, grab and go meals has been to all families. It is not designated for our free and reduced lunch students. It's any family that is in need.
Right, if they're on the bubble, they.
It doesn't matter. I mean, listen, I mean, it doesn't matter who it is. Lisa, I mean, they've got the opportunity to email or to contact Lisa, and we will give them, provide them with.
Yes, and we have had people that are coming to get food that are not on free or reduced priced meals.
That's right.
Good, thanks.
So Laurie, briefly, there aren't a, I don't think there's a ton of direction still for Kathy self-up in special education.
No.
But I certainly do want her just to briefly touch base with the committee because she had a conference call today with Associate Commissioner Russell Johnston. And I want her to just fill us in briefly on the lack of direction there too, I guess. So.
Hey Kathy, you're unmuted.
Okay, hi, everybody. Thank you for putting this together on such short notice. I wish I could give good clarity, but I can at least give a little bit of information that came out of the meeting that Russell Johnson had today with all the sped directors. It was a thousand people on the call. And he's actually doing a second one tomorrow because of the volume of people who are interested and need to have this information. There were three priorities that I think are shared by everyone. The first priority is obviously the safety and well-being of everybody. Looking at that in terms of students, families, staff members. We want everyone to be safe and well through this horrible and unprecedented time of the COVID virus. We're concerned about equity, making sure that the opportunities are available for all learners, including the unique profile learners, so those that are learning English language and those that have special needs through disability, as well as maintaining. I think for Ashland, that's a high priority because we value relationships so much. And we see that the relationships are really foundationally what allows good education to happen. So making sure that teachers and related service providers and staff have the ability to connect with their students and with their students' families on a regular basis is a top priority. In special education, our mandate is to provide free and appropriate public education in this time of, if I use the term crazy, I don't mean it disrespectfully. This crazy time that we're living for right now with unprecedented, you know, issues of the pandemic and figuring out how to provide opportunities for our students. You know, make sure that we're able to keep in mind the unique learner and those kids that are coming from a playing field that isn't quite equal and how to equalize it. There are two kinds of tracks that were outlined for us to consider in terms of how we make equity occur and having free and appropriate educational opportunity for all students. One was to provide clearly support and resources to families, which if you look on all of the webpages of each of the schools and on the main webpage of Ashland, it's really the listing of potential webpages or apps or resources that were made available by the teachers creating kits of materials and activities that were hard copied. That's the resources and supports that they're intending to have made available to people. And then the other piece was really providing instruction and services. And that can vary depending on both age level and, you know, what you're looking at. So, you know, I'm thinking about at a preschool level, they have activities for every day. And each of the activities is broken down in terms of the discrete areas that, and how you can target those areas. So it's actually almost providing a consultation to the parent about, here's what you can do with your child, here's how you can promote language, here's how you can promote fine motor skills, here's how you can promote a social connectedness. In addition to providing a Zoom class, I know that I was able to see a bingo class that one of the teachers at Bitaway did. But I also know at the high school level, they're also doing the same thing with regards to things like a Google Classroom or, you know, using that more so as a platform than Zoom. And we had one of our special educators providing a class in which all but one of his students jumped on board and he was able to touch base with them and make sure that they were okay. And so we have a wide variety of how our special educators and service providers are trying to reach out to each of the students that they have connections with and have assigned responsibilities for. I think the one critically important thing is we're not trying to replicate what's on an IEP's service delivery grid and to match perfectly the goals that are identified within an IEP. We can't do that, and we acknowledge we can't do that. Just like we acknowledge we can't be educating the kid in a content area or in a general classroom the way we could if they were sitting in front of us in the school building. But what we want to do is provide opportunities for continued skill sets to be both mastered, not be lost, certainly enriching opportunities. But I think the more important thing that I also took away from it, and this was both from Russell Johnson and also Jeff Riley, is reminding parents that although, and I loved Erin when she said, I'm not a teacher. I, you know, that isn't what I do. Well, parents are the first teachers of students. And you are teachers, and all of us are teachers. And to remind us all of our capabilities to be that for our children and our students right now. Remembering that when you're cooking the meal, bringing that into a quick math lesson about measuring is totally appropriate for learning. When you are trying to manage your workday and you put sticky notes all over your screen to figure out what you're going to do when, that is an executive functioning skill that you can talk to your child about saying, this is how I remember my to-do list. So again, just reminding people that I think what's most important at this point is to bring out the good in all of us and to remember to be kind. And that, and I think, Laurie, you've been playing this out quite a bit, to take into consideration that we're all going to try to do the best job that we can through this unprecedented time. And we'll also evaluate what we're doing so that we can do it better and learn from each moment in time. We've had a few virtual team meetings that we've used as a platform for if everyone in the meeting was willing to do it. It's gone very well. I'm not sure we can continue to do that because as we go further into not having school, we move further away from having data that talks about current performance that also then informs what falls, should be next. And we certainly can't add eligibility teams at this time because all of those assessments are on hold at this point in time because school is not in session. So there's a lot still that we're trying to figure out. But I do want to say that I personally think Ashland as a community and certainly Jim, the staff and the leadership of each building and you have allowed this to be, I think, a very measured and good response to what is a very unprecedented, you know, time and something that was very hard and challenging and still is for all of us.
Thanks, Kathy.
Question for Kathy? So the final update, sorry, Laurie, is it okay if I?
Yeah, please.
I want Barbara just to give the doom and gloom update because she's under my name still.
Right, and these all have a budget impact.
They do, and I think it's important. We'll have to reconvene next week because we did have a conversation of the hourly pay folks through April sixth. And we said we'd revisit based on conversations of, from the governor and the commissioner, and we have some clarity there. Well, I asked Barbara this morning and that we'll present some information next week with regard to potential costs, what it would look like, and move from there. But I do want her to just share with you what was shared with her last night from the town.
Yeah, so Brittany from Town Hall sent out an email that the town is implementing a spending freeze. So out of the general fund budget, and then they've also put a hold on some capital projects. The two that affect us are seventy-five thousand dollars for technology that's now on hold and the money for the middle school bleachers is on hold. Jim and I haven't talked about a spending freeze on the school side because mainly, nobody's really spending anything right now.
They're not there to spend it.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's where we are, I think. As quickly, and I said this this morning to the group, as pleased and happy as we were with our budget getting passed by the town, literally forty-eight hours later, after it was passed on that Wednesday, the world turned upside down. And
It did.
It will have a negative impact on FY twenty, but also FY twenty-one. And we've just got to be thoughtful of that. And, you know, the move going forward with the budget we've passed will have to be revisited. It's just that's going to be the reality of it. So, you know, it's further conversation with Michael will occur when we get a better handle on, he gets a better handle on the revenue stream locally, but also at the state level. So just want to, just put it in the back of your head. But, you know, we're already, as an admin team, trying to figure that out.
Understood.
Hey, Jim, just a quick question.
Yeah.
And I assume you'll probably have more information next week when we meet. But, and I appreciate, Barbara, how complicated is what I'm going to ask and what we've talked about last week.
That's their warning, Barbara.
I assume work is still ongoing to figure out the overall net impact of these things. And now with that date even moving further, you know, how it costs us money or how we're not spending money in place A and B and just what that overall net difference is? And do you have a feel for, you know, how, you know, I can't think of the word that doesn't sound bad, but how thorough you're going to be able to have gotten through it for meeting next week and given us a good picture on what that might look like?
Yeah, no, I think I'll be able to get to the information for next week. I pulled a lot of that together already. I just have to tune it now for the different time period. The big unknown, I think, for us right now is I don't know what's going to happen with sped tuitions. And I don't know what's happening with bus transportation. We have two business manager meetings with Jay Sullivan, one tomorrow on nutrition services and one Monday on transportation. So we need some clarification from them. And then I'll know if we have any savings in those areas.
I think, Paul, too, it's important when we're talking about loss of revenue as well. So we're losing over eight thousand dollars in rental income just through the April sixth deadline. And we haven't, you know, we haven't looked into anything past April sixth because that was sort of where we had, you know, landed before. But that's, you know, that's a revenue stream that's certainly going to be gone. And, you know, the offset, obviously, was what would it cost to have a custodian on overtime for those days? We get that, but minimal compared to the revenue loss.
Yeah, and as I was asking about just what that net is, because I know it's complicated.
Yeah.
Possible savings somewhere, costs or no fees or revenues in other areas? And it's not simple.
It's not, and we've been working through it, trying to, that was one of the things this morning. It was like, okay, let's try to make sure we capture every single expense and revenue potential generator for us, so.
Is there any possibility of having to, you know, have we collect, for Stephen, have we collected athletic fees for the spring? And, you know, if the season is not happening, what has to happen there?
So.
You, Stephen, let's see. Hey, are you unmuted? Yeah, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the only user fees that we collected are the ones that were paid online. Everything else, we have not deposited. Barbara, do you want to talk more about that?
Yeah, so don't do the deposit, obviously. But if the spring season doesn't happen, then yeah, we lose the revenue from the fees, but also not paying the coaches from those fees. So we'll have to net out the difference there.
Okay. Anybody else with questions on any of this or comments?
Barbara, on that with the bus contracts, are the athletic scheduled buses also wrapped into that? Or is it separate from our regular transportation contracts?
It's separate. We get billed per trip for the athletics after the trip happens. The regular day is, we figure out the annual cost and make ten installment payments.
We have three left, is that correct?
Yes.
On the athletic piece only?
No.
No, athletic, we don't, we pay
Okay.
monthly or whatever, however it comes through for the season.
That would be part of your savings you're calculating, Barbara?
That would be part of your savings you're calculating, Barbara?
Yeah, but I have to figure out with everybody else across the state, what are we doing with our transportation contracts?
Right.
How much of that are we obligated to pay?
What else?
That's all we have for you. It just, I, you know, yeah, I mean, those are the updates, the major updates. And I just had people here if you had questions, that's all. So, I mean, again, publicly, I started by saying, I'm, you know, I'm really proud of our, our administrative team. They've, you know, when I sent a message out yesterday, I don't know if it was late at night or early in the day, I don't know. But I said 7:00 AM, 7:00 AM this morning, we need to be together for two hours to, to work through some things. And not one person batted an eye and said, we'll be there. And, and I know they have long days ahead of them when they, after they get off that seven o'clock Zoom session with me. So, so publicly, you know, on record, thank you to the administrative team for all the work that they're putting in behind the scenes that no one knows how many hours that these people are logging to, to ensure that our students are getting the services they need, whether it's nutrition, socio-emotional learning, academics, you name it, they're there doing it on behalf of Ashland. So.
Thank you all.
Yeah, we'd like to thank them too. So.
This is, I guess, more of a general question for any administrator who wants to answer it. But, you know, so given now that you have some of these new sort of guideline structures of three hours of content, like are, are any of you experiencing hearing from, from teachers that that's going to be difficult for them because of their personal situation? And I'm not talking about like one or two. Oh, Jim's not, Jim wants to answer.
I do, only because the guidelines just came out today.
Yeah.
And they don't know. And I have a meeting with the union tomorrow. So.
All right. I just was wondering if there's anything we should be aware of at this point where that's like, if you've heard from more than 50% of your staff that that's going to be a challenge because of their personal situation. You know, I think we need to be mindful that everybody, I think I started this meeting out saying like, we all have a story or several stories about what we're worried about in our own personal lives. And I do really want to be sensitive to that as well. I mean, I don't know what, what every single person's dealing with, but I'm sure it's something. Okay, anything else?
Lori, just a general question. And that's more about, seems like things, you know, are continuing to change consistently. And I don't know if we wanted to have any dialogue about whether we should be scheduling a meeting a week, a couple of meetings a week, you know, or anything like that. And I don't, I don't have a desire to add more meetings. I'm just trying to get a sense, probably mostly from, from Jim as to what he might need to put on our agenda and how, sort of timing of what might be coming down the pipe here. So we can think about, you know, we want to set something that we're going to do on a regular basis, just see how it goes. And it seems like everybody's home. So, so far we've been able to schedule things pretty easily. But just throwing it out there to see what the thought process would be.
I mean, I personally, Mark, think that we should be meeting at least once weekly. And then, then more emergency situations come up where there's information that we need to discuss it right away. But just given the nature of like, many of us aren't bumping into each other and, you know, having meetings that we had in the past with other groups and so forth. And everything's changing so rapidly that this is, and I think it's an important step to take to make sure that we're convening weekly. If nothing more than just a brief update for the community and for ourselves. I mean, this is the only time we're basically talking to each other. So.
I feel like this has been helpful, even though you haven't needed us to vote on anything to understand where you're at, what's going on. Where you see things coming.
Anything to have on schedule and cancel if we don't need it, rather than trying to scramble and try to follow OML and get things posted and everything in time. I agree.
So that being said, you know, let's get something on the books for next week.
What day do you think would be better? Like the middle of the week for updates or the beginning of the week or end of the week?
I, I think, again, it depends on when we do the meeting. I know that, again, I know, you know, everyone's working from home and trying, but they all have their schedules, Erin. And she and I talked the other day. It's just complicated with her schedule too during the day to set times for meetings. So.
What is a good time for you, Erin? Besides never, yeah. What is the best of the non-ideal times?
8:30 PM. Yeah, sorry. I'm on the front lines of this, like from a work perspective of trying to make sure that all of the cash reporting for my company doesn't go down. And when most of our workers supporting it are locked down in India. So that's why. I apologize if I had to step away and take calls a couple of times, but that's why things are so intense. And I'm literally double, triple booked from eight in the morning to usually five or six at night. But the later the better.
Could you do this? I mean, I'm concerned about, I know, you know, Jim's on Zoom all day from like six or seven in the morning. So I don't want to extend any of their nights beyond. Plus, if we, if we do, once we have to make some decisions and have to potentially have a long meeting, you know, starting at 8:30, think knowing that we might go for two or three hours is also not ideal. So, so is there some earlier time that you think you could possibly manage? Talking to you, Erin.
Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah.
I think Wednesday, Wednesday of next week would be a, a good day.
Well, Jim, when do you have your, like, when do you have your most informative meetings during the week? Do you have the Friday one with Darcy?
Yeah, so tomorrow from 8:30 to 11:00 now with the commissioner. But it, we, it varies. I mean, it's sort of, we, every Friday, we're with the commissioner. And tomorrow's Department of Public Health as well. So I, I think middle week is always good.
Good checking day, I think.
And we should have tremendous, you know, feedback and, in movement. Wednesday, I think is April 1. Is that right? Somewhere around there?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so we should be hopefully in a position that the, our remote learning plan is ready to go and ready to implement. And that's my goal is the commissioner wanted us to be ready for the beginning of April. As far as I know, that's the beginning of April.
Well, so I mean, you know, if I look at my, I, I can't guarantee any particular thing is better than another either, but you know, we, we throw something at the wall, Wednesday, the four, five or six work best and just set that as our reoccurring time. Hopefully all five of us can get there. But, you know, if only four of us can, then only four of us can. And, you know, we're meeting more frequently now. So, you know, so let's just put something out there and that'll make us a lot better to, you know, be able to get it than, you know, there's no ideal spot for five people, right?
So on Wednesday, I'm good from 12:00 to 1:30 and three to four. And then after that.
Want to say three then?
Yeah, I've, I've got something from three to 4:30 on that Wednesday. I can go later than that.
So let's do five or six.
Or you could do 12 to one.
That work for you, Erin? Five?
Yeah, so my, my four o'clock may run a little bit over, but I can probably make that work.
Okay, so I'll just meet with Mark and Lori after that, send an agenda. So we'll plan on five o'clock on April Fool's Day.
Okay.
Yeah. And so why don't we, why don't we set that as our reoccurring weekly meeting? And Jim, when we set up the Zoom, we set up a reoccurring, it'll have, it'll have the same URL, same meeting ID.
Yep.
And that'll simplify agendas and all that.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
That sounds good.
Anybody want to move to adjourn?
Nope.
No?
Do you want to do a public comment?
Oh, and that's right. Steve Mitchell has raised his hand.
Steve Mitchell, I'm sorry. Where are you? Because I, oh, there you are. I'm going to unmute you. And I'm going to lower your hand. And thank you. And of course, if anybody else is here who wants to make a public comment, I don't think I gave a special time for that yet. So let's do that now, starting with you, Mr. Mitchell.
Well, thank you, Lori. And thank you, everyone on the school committee and, and the school department. I really appreciate the work that you're doing, the challenges that you're having with, you know, sometimes lack of real guidance from, from at the state level. And we're experiencing certainly the same thing. So I appreciate it. And I just wanted to comment if Lisa Bowden is still on the line. I'm just, my heart is warmed by the work and the efforts that, that she is doing. So thank you, Lisa and, and all of her staff.
Thank you, Lisa.
And I just, you know, regarding our meetings, we're, we are probably going to maintain our bi-weekly meetings. So we will have a meeting next Wednesday as well. And so we'd like to coordinate. I think it's probably good if we coordinate with the school committee meeting. So if you're going to meet at five and your meetings go to 6:30, then we would, we would move our meeting time beyond that. So if we could coordinate that, I think that would be a good thing.
Is that going to inconvenience your board if you have to start after 6:30?
Yeah, we're, we're fine. We can, we can, we'll work with your schedule. Whatever works for you, I think our group can, we'll, we'll make it work. So just, if it's going to be five to 6:30, then we'll start our, our meeting afterwards.
So, so I think Steve, good point. The every other meeting is our normal school committee meeting. Yeah. So which we would run, we could run longer. So if we have more business, I say we put those on that traditional. Yeah, the every other. So then we, then we are flexible with the select board. So they can, yeah.
Yeah, make it work and give, give the community every opportunity to, to, to watch both our meetings. So. Really, that, that's it. I, I just want to thank you again. You know, this has, you know, been a great meeting, very informative. And my last comment really is directed to Mr. Kara. If you want to make your way over to Newcastle Road, I would gladly dance on the road with you. All right. So thanks, thanks, and have a good night.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Anybody else? I'm looking for hands. Seeing none. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Removed.
I'll second.
Second. And then Erin, are you in favor of that?
Oh, yes.
Paul Kendall? Mark Terry?
John.
Kathy Bates?
Yes.
And yes for me. And then Jim, before you end the meeting, you'll send Mark and I a link. Okay.
All set.
Excellent. Thank you again so much for being here and for all the many other things that you're doing. We truly appreciate you and all your teachers and staff. Everybody's going above and beyond.
Thanks, everyone.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Bye-bye.